So he's checked it out, everything is set correctly.
Oh, thank you, thank you. No, actually, I think I'm good. Oh, are you sir? Hey, kids.
Hi there, oh, two kids.
Are we?
More like granny here. You're the young'un.
How are you? Good evening and welcome to the September tenth, two thousand twelve, regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. Please now join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll read the mission statement for the school district. The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. The first item for review on our agenda is a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust. And Crystal Buzza is here to discuss that. It's Exhibit A on page one of our board packet. It's a donation of ninety-one hundred dollars. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept this donation of nine thousand one hundred dollars from the RJ McElroy Trust for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, in a second. I moved and seconded, and Crystal, if you could, give us some information on this.
The school district has been very lucky over a number of years to receive a wonderful gift from the RJ McElroy Trust. It's something that their trustees feel is very important to the Cedar Valley, and that's what they call a McElroy Youth Emergency Fund. And so all of our high schools, middle schools, and then our pre-K receives benefits from this. The amount ranges from three hundred dollars for the pre-K up to five hundred dollars is usually the amount they try to keep in their balance. And funds can be used for really whatever the school principal and/or counselor or family support worker who they designate to help see feels fit that the community can't provide otherwise for a family or student. So some things might be if there's healthcare needs, if the child wants to participate in some type of athletics or musical curriculum, something that could expand their learning, but their family wouldn't have the funds to pay for it. They can use these funds to help that child, so they can't say, no, you can't participate because you can't pay for, you know, this type of lesson, or these type of shoes or equipment. And the fund has been so great and generous that if at, when December rolls around, if a school's balance is low, we just send a letter to Ms. Van Gorp, and then usually the trustees will grant to refill that account.
And I think it's a program, there's a couple others, I think, like Women Aid, that also does it, but I think McElroy's been there the longest and provides the most support. Yeah, I believe it's a very good program, like eyeglasses or whatever the need arises. Any questions or discussion? If not, then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Please express our gratitude to Stacy.
I will.
The next item on the agenda is a donation from the East High Golf Fundraising Committee, and Al Pace is here regarding that, and Crystal as well. This has become an annual event, and we'll get the motion on the table, that the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept this donation of six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from the East High Golf outing for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, in a second. And it's moved and seconded. Mr. Pace?
So over the last eight years, the alumnus of East High have held a charitable golf fundraiser in June, did so again this year, and I'm here to present a check on behalf of them this evening to the district for six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and also note as well that in the next few weeks, we will have a second check forthcoming for an additional amount of funds in care of the East High Golf Alumni Association as well going to East High School.
Oh, fantastic. Please, the amount, I've just noticed over the years, has gotten more and more significant.
It has.
It seems every year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a well, a very well-run event, I know. And do they have it scheduled next year? Do you know?
They're tentatively working on that right now.
Okay, okay, but typically in June?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did want to note, this is kind of a good week because it is East High's homecoming, so what a great bonus on top of that.
Yes, yes, well, please express our gratitude to everybody on that committee.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it. And what are the, what are the funds being used for?
At this point, there are thirteen grants that coaches and activity sponsors have requested, and the board is looking at each one of those grants to see which is the most deserving as they go through their funds.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That brings us then to the Blue Zones Committee, and again, we have Crystal Buzza here and Felicia Cass from the Waterloo Blue Zones Project is here. And this is to vote on the non-binding, non-binding resolution that we discussed at our meeting two weeks ago. We'll get the motion on the table. That recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt a non-binding Blue Zone School Pledge Resolution.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, we moved and seconded. Okay, thank you. And again, this is the Blue Zone School Pledge Resolution, it's in our board packet on page four, five, and six, and we discussed it two weeks ago, and then have discussed it, I think all board members have looked through it and discussed it, or excuse me, have reviewed it pretty carefully. Some had some concerns, but Felicia is here today, but I think the level of information you provided has been very helpful, so thank you for that. I guess, I don't mean to belabor what we've gone over before, but I don't know, do either of you have more to add, or would like to?
There were a couple of questions that came up from Mike about the why are there more food-related items and exercise-related items, and we did get an answer to that. There was a concern as they were putting the menu choices together that we not cut into educational time, and any time you start talking about movement, then you start talking about, oh, are we cutting into educational time? So it is a little more food-heavy or restrictive, and that's why, just concerns about educational time. So I think that was the one open question that we left on the table, and I guess I invite any other questions, and we'll...
Well, I see after looking at it a little closer, there are just different point factors applied, and
Right.
a lot of them were a lower factor that had to do with the food, so that does
Adjust your concern.
give a little weight and a little more adjustment to what I had noticed originally.
Okay, good. It was a great question, so we appreciate that.
So, my understanding now is that this is a rigid take it or leave it proposal, is that correct?
No, there are menu of choices, and the poli, these are all policy choices that each principal will work with their parents and teachers in each school. So it's not a rigid platform, and the resolution itself is a non-binding resolution.
Well, but I think last week we were told that feedback was invited, and yet, the proposal is word for word despite concerns of what it was the last time.
I guess I didn't get any feedback to change the resolution.
I guess the, probably the biggest, before getting into that specifically, one concern was, we want to make this work from the district, and I heard this from a couple board members, in that with this being a pilot project, we want to make it integrate into what we've got existing within the schools in terms of things that we're already doing, policies we already have in place, what policies can be changed pretty efficiently in order to tie in with the Blue Zones Project, but then also what things, what items are kind of lower priority as well going into it. And I think the question was, we didn't want the, this resolution to be almost sort of the constitution that we would always go back to and couldn't be changed or amended, I guess. But could you maybe provide some, not background, but ideas for going forward? What are the steps going forward?
Right, so you have a very well-written wellness policy that you adopted in February of twenty-eleven that's really in sync and in alignment with all, almost all of these principles. And really what, where we would look to add energy and synergy is to breathe real life into that wellness policy, and to say, so that was your policy, it was a good idea, is it actually being acted on? And find the alignments within that policy, school by school. So there are various things that each school can take on, where they may say, you know, that's what we said the policy was, but we're a little off of that. And how can we get in alignment with that policy? So I see these as really merging and creating healthier kids in the long run.
And when it's been put in place in other places, well, or I guess Albert Lee, did they, did it go through the school system in Albert Lee as well like this?
I don't know if, they passed a non-binding resolution, just as the city did, and they worked with the schools. It was not exactly in this form, you know, but...
I guess what I'm getting, we don't want to add more bureaucracy and more layers to things, but
Absolutely.
were you envisioning like a Blue Zone Committee, and this might be more for Dr. Norris too, just going forward, I mean, we're looking at a years-long process to go through, what?
Well, we have, I'm sorry, we have folks here at the district office that are in charge of all health-related activities. We've had several health committees before, wellness committees. We'll continue to do that, but there is a lot of flexibility and freedom to the individual schools as even whether they want to sign up for it, participate. And secondly, they can, they can figure which policies are better for them at their school, like Felicia said, working with their parents, and so we just want to be a support from the district office, and it's, yeah, it's nothing that we're going to monitor with a firm position here at the district office.
I guess, and I'm not a central organization-type person, as you know, however, in this case, it would seem like, you know, here's the ideal scenario for me, and again, the concept is be as compliant and cooperative from the Blue Zones as we can, but still, our focus is healthy kids and healthy staff. And I would think that we would want a Waterloo core on nutrition that goes K through twelve, and what, mostly within our science classes, what specifically are we going to teach? And it would include elements such as, you know, what are the basic nutritional items, all of the vitamins, minerals, amino acids, everything that you need on a carburetor, hybrids, sugars, what do you need on a daily basis? And make sure everybody knows those first, because we have, you know, we do have anorexia problem, so just prohibiting foods doesn't add, you know, comprehensively address health. So, but to me, that's a centralized Waterloo core part of science, nutrition. And this is more important because, as I explained to Mike earlier, that, you know, we used to just eat meat, and that's sort of the dummy's guide to nutrition, because it has about everything in it you need. But a lot of kids, for whatever reasons, are getting away from meat, but it's a lot harder to get a healthy, a truly healthy diet, because you've got to include, you know, certain nuts and certain fruits and so forth that are unique in those particular amino acids and so forth, so it isn't as easy as it used to be. I think kids ought to know that, and we ought to teach that, and it ought to be part of our science curriculum. So that's more comprehensive, I think, than the Blue Zones would anticipate, but still, I think it's appropriate. So I would propose that as number one. Number two is the whole physical activity thing. At some place between nutrition and physical activity, there has to be that balance of energy, of sugars, carbohydrates, you know, whether you want to gain or lose, or whatever you want to do. But that speaks to the physical activity classes we have, you know, a lot of the pedometers, a lot of the heart rate monitor, we have a lot of that equipment already, and that can be, you know, integrated into math and science as well. So I think this is a rich opportunity for that. And then lastly, if you look at the programs, I think a lot of those are, could be district-led, again, it becomes a matter of priority of time and resources, obviously, but creating a farm-to-school program, to me, that's a district initiative, implementing a walk-in school, but it's a school initiative, but at least the organizational structure and the guide, and the principles and guidelines and policies, to me, ought to be district-wide. Plant and maintain a school garden, again, the organizational structure, individual schools can choose whether to or not, but in terms of suggestion, you know, what to grow and how it fits into the science curriculum, that to me could best be, the guidance could best come from a school or a district standpoint. Healthy snack cart program. I don't really know what that involves, and I tried to find out on the website, this idea of, whatever it's called, healthy foods. I couldn't find a list, I don't know where it is, we have to buy a book to get that information, or what. But, so that's dependent on, on the cost and the physical assets. So I think number three would be, so number one would be this whole nutrition curriculum, number two, the PE curriculum, sports, that complements that. And number three, sort of a facilities finance committee that says, all right, on these major programs, what would it take from a district standpoint to do the healthy snack cart? Does it mean more trips to the school? Does it mean, what does it mean? So study those three things, and then say to the schools, okay, these are going to be district-led, and, you know, it adds up to fourteen points, and then you can look through the other ones if you want to, and, you know, put them as you can. But, no, I was, but I don't want to in any way promote what I would call are several toxic elements in this program. And the one I mentioned last time was, you know, was government reaching into the school lunchboxes of kids. So number nine on policies, that's a deal-breaker for me. That's the, you know, the prohibitive elements of this program, particularly the food Nazi elements, you know, have no place in a free country, I'm sorry. So that's a deal-breaker. So if you're not willing to take that out of there, you know, then I can't vote for it, even though I think it's, it's a pretty good program. We can make it even better, much better, quite frankly. Again, if you are welcome to input, but it appears as, oh, no, this is it, sorry, take it or leave it. So that kind of, I don't know, it just always raises red flags when, when there's an unwillingness to change the proposal.
Well, I think from the paragraph above, it says, schools can pick from the list of policies, and so maybe that would be one, maybe we wouldn't pick.
And that is something that
Yeah.
we did add to the language. I think Blue Zones is trying to create something that, that's what, we're kind of like a test. Waterloo's a test, Cedar Falls a test, the other two communities are also a test. So these are guidelines that they've taken from other communities. They're options that we can pick from, but they're going to keep those as an option for another school so they can manage. Now, when they do this next round, we'll certainly give them that feedback, that may be something they might remove for the next round, but I think for this round, they want to keep the four as consistent as possible so they can measure what is it that schools decided to choose most frequently? Why is it? What are the results? They can't, it's harder to measure things if you don't keep a balance within them, so that's part of it, is keeping this consistent balance. So that, that's the other issue, if we want to compare, how is this working from community to community, you've got to keep some similarities. But I would say we could certainly say as a district, that's one, we are not going to allow our schools to have as an option.
So for this project, you would look at the data at the end of the year, and if no one chose number nine, then that might be something that you would not move forward with, is that?
Well, the, the project goes until two thousand fourteen, and so we're going to follow these guidelines through two thousand fourteen, but the, as a program, they're looking for feedback on what creates heartburn for an organization, and what moves the dial. So where do we see that we can really have programmatic outcomes that are measurable and sustainable?
But you can see my point, even, even though it's voluntary, and even though you don't have to adopt this policy, you know, by voting for it, because I don't want to, you know, in any way, shape, or form support this suggestion, you know, because it's intrusive government that doesn't belong there. So if I vote for it, I'm sort of endorsing that, and I can do that.
So you're bringing up several really great points about what this project is designed to do. One of the things that you mentioned is, well, we might want to take this and own it and make it better, and that's exactly the idea, is that this is a framework, and that they are sure that you all have better ideas at the local level to take and influence and own. This is a framework, they're trying to keep the framework consistent, so that they can see, if we keep this framework, what happens? Where do we get pushback? You know, I, I think rather than looking at one particular policy and saying, let's throw the baby out with the bathwater, understand that it's a framework, and these are policies of choice.
I feel comfortable voting for this, because it's my understanding that the Blue Zone Project is not to dictate to us what to teach or how to teach it. They offer ideas and suggestions, and it's left up to us as a district to carry out the program that fit our need. And all of these logistics will have to be worked out at the local district.
Yep. And in the local school. It's going to take the principal and the PTA and the teachers, and it's going to be a school-by-school solution. Right, because some of the schools, because it's voluntary, some of the schools can perhaps do more than others, right. And I wanted to thank you for your suggestions of reading Nudge, the book Nudge. My husband had that on his bookshelf. So I read about the architectural choices. So I understand now about redesigning lunchrooms to nudge you to choose better foods. Thank you. Thank you.
And what I thought, and I also am comfortable with the resolution and where it is going forward, but with the understanding that this is a non-binding resolution, and by the time we do get to binding resolutions or things, we probably will register our heartburn with some of the items that are on here. I mean, the policy number nine, Lyle talked about that, I know it's been talked about, the lineup five, and we don't
Right.
I see that, you know, of the nine things, the schools probably aren't going to really be pushing the number six, but, but number one, and, you know, two and three, those might be more school-related things. And so I guess, one thing that maybe caused a little bit of concern was, we, we didn't want to pass this and then say, oh, that's it, and then two years later, we found out that, you know, somebody just took that ball and ran with it, and there was no further say in it. But I, I don't think that's the case here, I mean, I feel comfortable in going, going forward with it.
So the typical
Personally, yeah.
the typical cadence is that we would come back in May after the schools have started to pass policies, and as a district, ask you to pass some policies? But we looked at your wellness policy, and it's so comprehensive and so well-done, that we didn't feel a need to come back and ask you to do that. Now, if you want to, we'll be happy to come back again, but you really have an excellent wellness policy already, and, and more policy and legislation doesn't necessarily make better schools, so...
And just one more comment, in addition to the intrusion item, the philosophy of prohibition, and I, on the website, I saw that a couple different places. I guess I would ask you to really think about that, whether well-educated, intelligent choices of a whole, the whole variety, gamut of foods would be a better approach than to artificially restrict certain foods. And maybe not at every grade level, but by the time they're in high school or twelfth grade, if they're not, you know, independently making those intelligent choices and understand nutrition and, and physical activity and, and energy balance, if they don't understand by that time, I don't think prohibiting specific foods in a specific place at a specific time is going to really be very successful. So that's philosophically, I think that's a short-term.
I'll share just a little story with you. I was a child of the nineteen-sixties, and I grew up in the backseat of the car, standing up, climbing over my brother and sister while my parents smoked in the front seat of the car. And as a society, we have decided that children should be in special seats, belted in, and we have pretty much prohibited smoking in public places. Now, parents can still smoke in the cars with their kids, but we find that very few people do. So I think when you look at these prohibitions, think back to nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-four, and what our culture looked like then, and how as a society, we decided that there were too big of cultural costs to pay from injuries from car accidents where we had children who were not secured, and from secondhand smoke, and smoking in general. And I would say that's where we are today with nutrition.
Let me give you another example, if you look at number twelve, birthdays and other celebrations. It's something that's been going on fifty years, and we never stopped to ask if it was good or not, it's just that every mom and every dad out there wanted their kids to have better treats. And so the treat competition starts in schools. And we don't ask ourselves, because the kid goes home and says, Mom, what are you going to do for treats tonight? They forgot to tell them that it was
Right, Chandler? That it was due to
And so what this is about to me is simply about talking to people about making different choices, and if you have birthdays only once a month, kid can, kids can still have a great time, we can still have some treats, but it doesn't have to be every day.
Which it could be.
It absolutely could.
I used to bring, I used to bring a box of Snickers, that's what I bought, when I was a little kid. Right. My father would go to the grocery store, and he'd get the big box of Snickers for everybody. And you gained some educational time back in the day, right? If we're not celebrating every single day, we gain some educational time back.
So it's, it's just a matter of looking at our school culture and seeing what, what can we do to help people make better choices?
And I'm in full support of this too. I think, Lyle, that sometimes we have to look at it as complementary too, because you were saying like the nutritional element, and do we teach eat nuts, eat a balanced diet? And my children have had those classes, that they have discussed that already, and if they can give us more information to enhance that, what we're already teaching, or we can give feedback back to enhance what they have, I think it's a very complementary process. I don't think it's looked at, I, and as far as you saying, you know, well, these are the rules, and if we don't play by them all, we're not going to play well. Look at a board game, you have rules in Monopoly, but sometimes you don't get a hotel, so it's not applicable to how you play the game. So it's kind of the same here, that it's a, it's an idea, it's a rule of how you can, how you should play the game, but it may not always be applicable, so...
I don't like people that don't follow suit when they're supposed to.
And I have, I just have to say the same thing, I guess I look at this more as a template, as something that, I mean, Mike, I know you've been talking about physical activity since, you know, since you were on the board before. And I see this as a great tip of the iceberg, that we have some opportunity to take this policy, breathe life into it, make it our own. Maybe we do do our own physical core, or whatever we want, the Waterloo Wellness Core, whatever we come up with. And that's why I'm supportive of it, is because I think it's a great step, and I think that creating partnerships that are not just within our schools, I mean, yes, we sit here talking about that tonight, but the fact that we've got Waterloo and Cedar Falls involved, I think is a huge, important part of our community, and the wellness of all of our community affects our kids, of course, but being integrated with that, I just think is, is too important not to do, so...
Mike mentioned moving forward, and I guess my question for the superintendent would be, how do you think our curriculum in PE will be affected by this? Especially in the middle and high school, potentially. I know that it's looking like it's more of a elementary school project at this time, but looking down the road, can we see some other opportunities? But looking down the road, can we see some other opportunities?
And you know, I would like more time than just this evening to reflect on that and bring you back some, some good thoughts. The, the, if that is a priority of the board, the superintendent's more than willing to do that. I have a, I have a list of about 13 rank-ordered priorities that you've all given me, and I take them very seriously. And we're happy to, but we will, uh.
I don't wanna put it in, in, to the top of the list, I'm just suggesting, looking down the road, can we get something that we're looking at?
And what I'm saying is, what, what we oughta do, uh, once this happens tonight, is we oughta sit with the PE teachers and the other, and the other people. And we need to go, I, I think it's something Felicia said, and it's been echoed up here. We need to go back and, uh, say to some people, the board has spoken, the community has spoken. We've talked about how do we get healthier kids. And so that, that kind of gives the people at the high schools license to put more weight into it. And, but we're very willing to, uh, it, we have a serious problem in our school district and, and the world for that matter. And we're very willing to be serious about it.
And at this point, I'd just like to thank everybody from the Blue Zones committees. And Felicia for what you're doing, Crystal for what you're doing. We appreciate this, and I think everybody on the board realizes that we need healthier kids. Uh, some of the discussions we're having, it sounds like may fit in partly the reason why we have the pilot projects, to find out what causes heartburn and what doesn't, and that's what we're talking about now. But I, I think there's a sincere interest among everybody that we want healthier kids. And we may have some questions on exactly how we do that and how we get there, and that's what we're talking about tonight. But I think the overall purpose for providing more education for kids on their own to make healthier choices, and maybe take that back to their households as well, with their siblings and parents and other family members, is a good thing. So, I mean, I, I look at this as, the, the last thing we wanted, and the last thing you'll get from this school board is just a real cursory, sure, we'll approve it and move on. I think everybody has looked into this pretty thoroughly in trying to think, how could it work, or how could it work better? And that's what we're talking about, but that's a very positive thing, so. I thank all of you, but it, it also sounds like this whole Blue Zones project will be ongoing. And we'll kinda learn as we go a little bit, too. But we're all taking notes, I think, on what sounds good and, and maybe what doesn't sound so good, too. And figuring out what we need to do to, to change things. Any further questions?
Well, I just think that, um, from a perspective, probably Blue Zones, the ideal would be each community assumes ownership and, uh, looks at the community around them to see what different policies can be used in that community and what works best for them. Hopefully, I would hope that Blue Zones would be thinking about that, and wanting us to do that.
That's exactly what they want you to do, or are inviting you to do.
Any further discussion?
Just that in the, in the measurements, I, I'm assuming the whole BMI index, the, I think, health department, so, I think they volunteered last meeting to provide BMI index.
Yes.
That, that's still part of the whole plan, because to me, that's the, the best and ultimate measurement. Including, including, you know, I very much liked your suggestion that kids need to know what that is.
How it's measured and why it's measured, and, and, yes, understand the, the, the factors that go into that calculation. So, yes, in fact, uh, we're right now crunching the numbers, so to speak, on, on the measurements that were taken last school year. We're always a year behind. The measurements that, that we've been citing, um, currently, we're actually, the 2010, 2011 school year, we're about ready to, uh, share with the school district, uh, the, the results from the, the last school year's measurements. And so, uh, it takes that long to compile the data and to, to calc, make the calculation and, and profile them. So, uh, they'll be coming, you know, within the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. If not, then we'll, uh, we'll vote on the, um, resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay, I'm sorry.
And Chair votes aye, motion carried, six to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thank you all for being here as well.
The Power Nine team who showed up too, thanks.
Yes, thank, and showing up on a beautiful night when there are other things, we appreciate you all being here. And, and we look forward to working together too, in the future, so we.
You should be out walking now, Bob.
Great, thanks again. All right, the next item we have on our agenda, um, is information from individuals and delegations. And before I read the card, I wanna invite anybody who wishes to address the board to just let me know. Feel free to, um, but if there's no one, then I'll, I'll move on rather than read the card, so. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which tonight, um, is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the August 27th, 2012 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting. And there are less, kind of every week we go beyond, uh, the start of school, it gets a little bit less. Bills due and payable between board meetings. There's an open enrollment appeal, um, for two students, um, who were denied an open enrollment appeal. Then there is an agreement with Hawkeye Community College, a Child Development Center, um, that provides lunch, provides lunch for the, um, their daycare for the 2012 to 2013 school year, the lunches are made at Hoover Middle School, and they pick them up. And then lastly, there's a, a change order for Orange Elementary, um, it's order number eight, and it was discussed in our policy committee. It's for seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars for grading and for re-grading at the front along, um, along Kimball. Sidewalks along Kimball. So that's the consent agenda, are there any items members wish to be removed from the consent agenda? I don't have any, so, this might be the first time. Anyone? Yeah, I'll see what quick. We'll, uh, then move to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you, second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay, and the Chair votes aye, motion carried. That's a first. We've got two items then on the agenda, again, for action, and they're both regarding school resource officers. The first is Exhibit J on page forty. And this recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the School Officers' Resource Agreement for the 2012, 2013 school year, uh, with the City of Waterloo. Can we get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, um, and this regards the, uh, school resource officers, which are placed at all three, um, high schools, and then the three middle schools that are in the City of Waterloo. And I, Dr. Norris, do you have any background information? It seemed like it was a similar process in years past.
It's absolutely the same, and, uh, we wholeheartedly recommend you approve this. It's, they are invaluable to our schools, it's, it's quite a partnership.
Yeah, and I would just note, I think all the school resources, uh, resource officers are always at the football games as well. Which always is nice that the officers are there, and they know the students, and the students know them, and are comfortable with them. It works well. Uh, but again, this is for East, West, Expo, and then Carver, Hoover, and Central. In Waterloo, um, any?
The only thing I just went in looking through it was, you know, because obviously, uh, school day is not as long as like a regular patrolman's school day, or day, work day. And so, um, how are those hours configured as far as if they're at school from 6:30 to 3:30? You know, I mean, and then we're paying them extra after-hours to go to games and stuff?
Well, think, think of this contract as a partnership in that it actually costs about twice this much to pay for those.
Their salaries.
Yeah, so we're paying about half of it. Half of their salaries and benefits and insurances and all of those things. And then, um, they're assigned to us, uh, you know, a hundred, roughly, a hundred and eighty school days times, uh, roughly, uh, seven-hour day, roughly. And the rest of the time, they're, uh, they're on duty as, as Waterloo School Police during the summer.
Waterloo Police, I'm sorry, yeah.
Waterloo School, Waterloo Police. So, so consequently, uh, we, we are paying for roughly half their time, but we, uh, we get way more than half. Because they, they have other duties during the evenings and.
I have a quick question about, um, arrangement for pay, it states, you know, so much per hour. And then it goes down and talks about time and a half. So I'm wondering, in, in one paragraph, it says, part-time duty shall be requested after our activities, football, baseball, dances. And then down below, it says, will be paid time, is that time and a half of that rate?
It, no.
That is the time and a half rate.
That is the rate, and that's what we pay extra for the event.
I just wanted to verify that it does say time and a half, I just wanted to make sure if that, the rate is included in the time and a half. It is, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, and when they're working an extracurricular event, are they part of the, um, injury, sports injury process?
No, we have, we have hired two, um, paramedics from Waterloo Fire and Rescue. A year ago, at football games, I don't know if you're asking about all sports or just football games, or, that's a, a big one. A year ago, we actually paid for the ambulance to be full-time, deadheaded at Memorial Stadium. And this year, we took a different approach, we have the Gator, which is a portable vehicle. We have the two, uh, paramedics, and they provide first responder if a, a student is injured. They get right out on the field, and then the ambulance comes from a nearby ambulance. But the, the Waterloo Police Department do not have the, uh, the, the training in first responder.
As far as the communication, though, in the, in the sports, you know, softball or whatever it is,
Sure.
that don't typically be injured, but there can be serious injuries. Are we, are we covered at least from a, a line of authority and communication? Who's, or line of responsibility as to who's responsible for determining if and when, you know, paramedics or other assistance is required in getting them going?
Absolutely. Would you like me to go over that?
Well, is, is it the coach or?
Well, the, the coach and the, uh, the AD is on duty anytime there's a, uh, there's a sports event going on, and there's, and, and when there's any type of crowd, then there's also an administrator assigned. If it, if it's a, a very small one with no crowd, maybe just the AD.
Okay.
Cora, the trainer is on hand as well.
Okay. Cora wanted to say the trainer is on hand as well.
Man.
Would you come up, please, Cora?
At which event?
It's cause she had surgery a couple of weeks ago.
Good evening. We also have a contract with, to actually have trainers on at each of our events. For football, basketball, baseball, we actually have medical trainers there to assist our students outside of paramedics at football games or the police officers. So we do have trained staff available.
And that's Cedar Valley?
Medical.
Medical, okay. And they use a lot of you and I students or?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, sorry you had to walk up.
That's okay.
Before Cora, before Cora walks back, you might just observe her, uh, very spiffy tennis shoes she has on. She's irritated at me.
Thank you, Cora.
They are color coordinated, they are.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Turner. Oh, I'm in, I'm in trouble.
More sign language.
Yeah, exactly.
Wait till tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, hold him responsible.
Uh, any further questions or discussion? We'll let you off the hook, Cora. If not, we'll, uh, vote on the motion, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Uh, and the Chair votes aye, motion carried. Um, then that takes us to Exhibit K, uh, on page forty-seven. And this is the same school resource officers agreement, but it's for the City of Evansdale, who provides, the Evansdale Police Department provides an officer at Bunker. The City of Waterloo, um, contract was for two hundred and fifty thousand, the Evansdale contract for just one officer is forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the School Resource Officers Agreement for the 2012, 2013 school year with the City of Evansdale. All right, thank you, it been moved, second?
Second.
Thank you, in a second. And just by way of background, this contract looked very much similar to what was done in years past, and then similar to Waterloo. Obviously, it's an officer at Bunker, but, um,
And they also serve as pointer.
Yeah, just a block away, less than a block away. Any questions about this agreement? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay, and the Chair votes aye, motion carried. And that brings us to the Castle Hill contracts. This is Exhibit L, um, on page fifty-three on the agenda. And the recommended motion is that the Board of, Board accept the recommendation of the Waterloo Special Education Department and approve the Castle Hill Behavior Center and Preschool Contracts for the 2012, 2013 school year, with a change to number fourteen, duration and termination. Semi-colon, or colon, automatic annual renewal notification deadline date to March first. Thank you, in a second. Okay, um, and again, we've got, um, uh,
Ror Korn is here.
Ror Korn is here, and Larry Martin from the district, but Ror Korn, um, uh, from Area 267 is here, we appreciate him being here. And I don't know if there was any presentation you had, and we'll also ask Dr. Norris to provide some background information. Just before we get started, this was, um, an item that was in the Courier, um, there was a, an article in the Courier a couple of weeks ago about the, I think, the five schools that are, um, or five school districts, excuse me, that are affected by this, um, within Area 267. And we had, um, postponed this, I, I believe the AEA 267 Board approved it just this past week regarding this. And this now comes to the district, but with that, Dr. Norris, could you provide some information?
Well, I can, and, and for specifics, we'll have Larry and Ror come up, uh, and also ask Mr. Coughlin to, to jump in. Essentially, um, the State of Iowa determined that we were not following proper protocol. And it had to do with, uh, it had to do with how it looks to them. So AEA 267 was serving as the school, if you will. And it's really, uh, by the way, the Iowa code is written, it's really incumbent upon us to, uh, we can pay them to operate it, but it's, it's our school essentially. And so it, a school district, as I understand it, has to be the controlling governmental body. So it's nothing more, nothing less than that. People have made more out of it in that, because I and others have said, well, this gives us a good opportunity to look at how we're doing it, and how we're delivering services, and that all is true. And that all comes beyond tonight. What you're being asked to do tonight is just enter into this, uh, 20AD agreement with, uh, with AEA 267. This year will look identically the same, there will still be their teachers, their administrators, and their specialists will be delivering the services. It's just that we'll be, uh, turning in the financial information to the, the State of Iowa. Michael, anything else from your point of view?
I don't think so, I think that kinda summarizes where we're in, kind of a transition because of the state looking at rules and structure and, uh, just trying to form it as much to code as possible. So that's basically where we're at, that we will just, uh, agree to leave it for this year, cause it's too short a time notice to do anything different, but we will be looking at it, uh, this fall to see what we are, choose to do next year, whether to do something different or leave it as it is again, but it makes it more technically correct.
And as, as I understand it, it's not that the rules changed, it's that the, either interpretation or enforcement of the rules changed, okay. And so, and that affects Waterloo and Cedar Falls, I think Mason City and Clear Lake and Waverly, okay.
Do we know, are you gonna explain why this came about?
I can, if you'd like.
Will you push the button, Ror?
I think it's. I think it's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Norris gave you an excellent, uh, explanation. I don't know if we know why. It's a, and Andrew and, and Emily Christensen did an excellent job reporting it as well. Uh, we found out in mid-April maybe that there was a new interpretation of this, uh, from the federal side of things. Uh, federal government, as you know, has been looking at all their spending as they should. And this is one of the things that they have increased scrutiny on. So they looked at the state of Iowa and basically said, you know, we have procedures in, in place. And the state of Iowa said, so do we. And this is one of the things they looked at. Um, they have been looking at other programs across the state. You may have heard, uh, down at Woodward Granger, uh, they had quieted to do about this. Um, and so when it came time for us to work with the state, um, we were, uh, tried to be very compliant within a certain, you know, range of things. Uh, we also need to protect, you know, you as the district and protect ourselves and most of all, protect the students. So we found out in April, uh, what, uh, needed to happen. We didn't get a meeting with the Department of Ed until right before Memorial Day. So I think the actual date was May twenty-third. At that time, uh, they believed that the best way to do this was to establish some, a series of consortiums. Whereas Waterloo would partner with AEA two six seven in a consortium agreement. And then any district that send kids to Castle Hill would participate in an additional consortium agreement. So for probably, I'm gonna say maybe two months, uh, we tried to work, uh, that acorn. At the same time, we didn't think that it was a particular good idea. So, um, we, uh, spent a lot of time working on that and, and also, uh, we're trying to get some inroads as to do what we're asking you to approve tonight and which our board approved, uh, last Wednesday night. Uh, we think the, a contracted agreement makes a lot more sense than the consortium aspect of it. Uh, we didn't feel like the consortium, uh, protected your district the way we would want it to be protected. And we spent a lot of time trying to put agreements together that, uh, really mirrors what's currently going on without opening your district up to any kind of, um, you know, extranperaneous liability, I guess would probably be the best word. So I, I don't know if that answered your question. That gives you more of a timeline than how it came about. We were stunned, you know, to say the least, when this started coming out, uh, earlier this fall. And we knew, you know, it was gonna happen, but it wasn't, weren't sure when.
It is following a pattern and the pattern this board saw last year when Mr. Coughlin informed us that, that the state was looking at, uh, ELL services, uh, and there was some money on the line there. In addition to that, for the past year, uh, we've been, uh, we've had one of the easier routes in improving at-risk service dollars, uh, in the state. Um, they've taken a, another look at how at-risk dollars are being, uh, expended. And so gave, speaking of heartburn, superintendents all over the, uh, state had at-risk, uh, debates. So I, I do think both the, the Iowa department as well as the federal government are taking increased scrutiny look at, at, at the programming.
No, no, you explained it when you said the federal government, so I understand.
I should have stopped there. I do wanna apologize. The, the reason it was on your board agenda two weeks ago is because we asked it to be put on. And then we found out that we could get a meeting with the Department of Ed and move from the consortium idea to the contracted agreement idea. And that meeting would take place the day after your board meeting. So we made an emergency call, uh, and, uh, you were gracious enough to pull that, which really appreciate because we might've come back to you this week and say, you know, that one you approved two weeks ago, uh, can we do a different one? So, uh, the, the blame and the fault was all ours, but I like where we are right now a lot better. And I think, and talking to, uh, Michael and, and, uh, and Dr. Norris and Larry, I think, uh, you guys do too. They've been outstanding to work with. This has been very complex. They've been very patient, uh, and very helpful as we've gone through the process. So I salute them for their work as well.
So does this change the level of oversight that, uh, the district has in the programming? Or any of that either under disagreement or what we foresee in the future? What, what, you know, is it more, is it less, is it the same?
I would, I would say it'd be the same. Uh, currently IEP teams are the ones that determine the, the level of need for a student. Um, you know, for our three-year-old pre-K programs currently, we've been, you know, working with AEA for many years and that's where we look to provide that service. Uh, we only have a very few number of students in the behavior program at Castle Hill. Um, so there's not a real change in, in the day-to-day operation, operation for our staff. Uh, AEA continues to supervise their staff. Um, so it's, it's not a change in operation for us at this time.
With regard liable to future, I think it is something we'll have to have. And we planning on, uh, looking at it in much the same way we did, uh, a couple of years ago, looking at Devonshire and, and looking at the cost benefit and those things. But that, that is, uh, another four or five month process ahead of us.
Yeah, well, like I said, we have till March first to determine, you know, maybe what we wanna do next year.
You've made a counter offer on the dates and my understanding from my board is that it's okay for me to go ahead and approve that without taking it back through the board. I do understand, Dr. Norris has talked to me about, uh, wanting to move the, the original date we had the contract was January first. And so he's asked to move that to March first to facilitate the Waterloo district. And, uh, that makes a lot of sense. So I, I believe that I'll be able to honor that, uh, that change in date.
And, and thank you for that. Cause it, I, I think January first sometimes means really December twentieth or, yeah, twenty-third around there, but.
Yeah, it's way, I think it's too tight a timeline for how complex this is.
As well. And, and Roar, I think we need to express our gratitude to AEA two six seven too, for the cooperation going through this. I'll just say for, um, I think for parents, the biggest thing is not actually who does it, it's just what the services are. And I think a lot of board members probably have seen both. Um, well, anybody that's in our schools, you don't really know who's an AEA two six seven employee and who's a Waterloo Community School District employee. Um, I think they're both very well-run organizations. But it's, it's a, um, it's, I, again, I, I, I think it, it, it just matters, um, that it's, it's a teacher or, uh, a professional who's working with students. And so a lot of this is more the administrative aspect of it. Um, but I think for everybody, it still wants the same goal, whether it's AEA two six seven or the Waterloo School District or Cedar Falls or Waverly, Shell Rock, whoever it is, that everybody's working towards the same goal, so.
So it's a hundred percent sure you won't buy Castle Hill, is that correct? No.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I just wanted to.
We'll, we'll take that off. But the, uh, um, no, it, it's, it, I guess I, um, how should I put this? Even seeing the services myself, I, I, I have a level of comfort with both AEA two six seven and the Waterloo School District and, and our special ed services, um, that everybody's working very hard to do the right thing for kids. And so, and I, and I think that will continue. So that makes me feel much more comfortable with all of this.
And the renewal is till July one, correct?
I can make that change. You're, you're, you're negotiate, you're offering a counter offer and I believe that the board authorized me to make that change. So that would be my position. I, I believe for your district, that makes a lot more sense.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Uh, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. I deeply appreciate it. It's in the best interest of kids, so thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is exhibit M on page sixty-six. This is a cash flow borrowing agreement. Um, essentially a short-term borrowing, uh, procedure. Um, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Farmer State Bank for a five million dollar credit to utilize from September tenth, two thousand twelve to October twentieth, two thousand twelve at an interest rate of two point five percent on the actual funds committed to the district.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you. End discussion. Mr. Coughlin, could you explain this item?
Um, this is something that we have talked about, um, as we were dealing with a couple of different issues on, uh, supporting the orange project with some cash flow and that this time of year before property taxes come in, in October, that this is the lowest part of our cash flow, uh, capability. And if you look at the charts behind those, uh, on page sixty-seven, that's what you've seen, uh, with the financial reports every time. And if you look, uh, September and October, uh, that's our lowest point. So yes, we are just trimming past that right now because our main payroll dates are on the fifteenth. Um, and property tax day day doesn't come in until between the seventeenth and the twentieth. So we're just missing it by days. Um, but what I've done on the bottom there is show you, uh, kind of a projection of where cash flow is going to be without the line of credit. Uh, so we will dip below, uh, into the negative for just a short time on a couple of different instances. So this is just to get us through that time period. Um, and then we just pay our interest on whatever we use of that line of credit. So the bank has been very, uh, flexible to work with us on that. And, um, we feel good about setting this up. And then we should be good for the rest of the year. Uh, and in following years, if that is the case, we, uh, will evaluate it on an annual basis. But ice cap would be a, uh, instrument to use. Um, we didn't know we were going to be using cash flow as strictly this year when the, when the ice cap opportunity came. Um, so without the orange project, we wouldn't have needed this, so.
But it seemed like the rate was two and a half percent is historic, yeah. I was gonna say, especially people that bought houses in the, what, late seventies and early eighties, they were saying twelve, fourteen percent. Any, any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Um, and that ends the action items on our agenda. But, um, the final exhibit is exhibit N, um, on page sixty-eight. It's monthly internal financial information. So Mr. Coughlin, we'll turn it back over to you.
Um, I've put together a couple of different charts with this and we, um, we did discuss this at Finance Committee, uh, at the end of, um, August. And this is giving a preliminary ending numbers to the eleven-twelve year. We just had our audit a week ago. We're still doing some finalizing with that. The annual report, uh, the CER is due next Monday. So, uh, the business office has been a little bit busy. But these are, are exhibits to give you an idea of where we're sitting right now. And, um, it does show where we're ending up with balances for the eleven-twelve year. And then also I put together some preliminary numbers for twelve-thirteen. And in preliminary, they're very close to being finalized, but, uh, this time of year is always an issue of, uh, what staffing has to be when the actual kids show up. And there's a little bit of, uh, flexibility with the HR department, um, to get all of the needs filled. Uh, and some of the, uh, comparison of, of twelve to thirteen and all of those detailed examinations have not been totally completed yet. So if you do have a question on this that comes up, please let me know. Um, but this is where I'm going now after we get the CER done, uh, to start drilling down into these numbers a little bit more to understand all the relationships. Um, but with that, I will start on page sixty-nine and this is the, uh, June twelve revenue and expenditure summary. Showing that for the year, the actual revenue that came in was a hundred and sixteen million, four eighty-five, um, which is a little bit over of what we had projected. And expenditures were a hundred and eighteen six, which were also a little bit over what we expected. Uh, but the relationship came out to about where we were projecting with an unspent balance around twelve point two-three. That may change a couple hundred thousand by the time the audit is done, hopefully even to the betterment of that. But that all has to pass their muster. Um, so we are ending up about where we expected this year, that we were cresting. And we would maybe come down a little bit from where we had ended last year, and that seems to be the case. So then you look on page seventy and that is the breakdown of all the different functions or the programs. Maybe easier to relate to. Uh, and then there's salary benefits and all the different categories that go along with that. It's showing the end of the year for June of twelve and then compared to June of eleven. So this is part of the drill down that I do now and start doing where's, why were the changes? And what caused the changes and answering all of those. Um, a lot of that has already been done. Uh, but to see the final numbers, uh, is always, uh, then goes back to a review. And then you project into thirteen, um, to make sure you are, uh, putting together a solid budget for the upcoming year. Uh, page seventy-one is the other major funds that we deal with, um, from the tax issues and capital projects. You have the management fund, the PEPAL fund in the middle, and then capital project or the sales tax fund, uh, at the bottom. The management fund is showing, uh, carrying forward a balance of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, um, which has been very consistent. We've been between that and a million for the last three or four years. Um, the PEPAL fund, we have driven that balance down a little bit. It's just a little, it's about seventy-five thousand. Just with some projects that were coming in. And I also, uh, continue with the, um, practice of charging part of transportation and technology to that. The transportation issue is if we owned our own fleet, we would have to buy buses and this is where we would buy buses from. And since Durham now charges us for the route, part of their charge is the charge of new buses for them to update their fleet. So that's why it's appropriate to take part of their bill out of this. Capital projects or the sales tax, um, that is ending the year, uh, between one point eight and one point nine million. Um, and that, uh, is being used quickly because of the orange project costing between a million and a million and a half every month. So that, uh, that's what we anticipated and that's what we're supporting with some cash flow help out of the general fund. So you can see on seventy-two is the cash flow summary for the whole year as compared to the previous year. And in the ten-eleven, um, the block in the middle there was, was that same kind of cash flow activity until we had sold the QSCB bonds for the orange project. Um, so you'll see that same kind of, uh, documentation in ele, in twelve-thirteen as we support, um, cash flow to orange. Then on seventy-three, now I've got some twelve-thirteen exhibits, um, that we will start with and, uh, then fine tune as we get into the fall and see all of our, uh, costs solidify. Showing not too much activity yet in the revenues, a little under six hundred thousand. And up to this point, we've spent a little over seven, six million. So you can see how cash flow suffers at this time of the year. But we're just getting started in the year. Really the salaries are, um, just the auxiliary staff because the teachers are paid in July and August from the previous year. So that's why it gets off to kind of a slow start, um, for expenditures as well. Uh, the page seventy-four, that's a three-part, um, tables where at the top it's the same program and, and, um, summary by salary benefits and so on. But the top one is the actual expenditures through August, the six point seven million. The middle one is the budgeted numbers for each one of those for twelve-thirteen. And then the one on the bottom is the eleven-twelve actual expenditures that, for the year that we just got done with. So those will be the comparison numbers of, of, uh, fine tuning all of that and addressing any, any additional questions that come up. We have done a lot of review to that already. Um, when we had to look at this year's budget in thirteen with basically no new revenue. So that was a, uh, exercise that we have been through administratively in the cabinet over the last three or four months of saying we have increases in salary and, uh, had taken the commitment that we were not reducing positions. So we were taking on the, uh, positions of ed jobs and, uh, other areas to not reduce any staff to, uh, keep staff in instruction and try to support our efforts for, uh, student achievement. to keep staff in instruction and try to support our efforts for student achievement. So when you keep all of your staff and get no new money, then you have to find areas in other places. We talked about that quite a bit at the Finance Committee, showing the worksheet that we had gone through to identify areas. And yes, there have been trim back in other areas besides staffing. That's the only way that you can take on three to five million of new cost in salaries and only get five hundred thousand in new revenue. So we are, we are on track to do that. And that's why the budget is as tight as it is. But we are showing expected expenditures going from one hundred and eighteen million to one hundred and nineteen million. So we're showing very little in expenditure increase because we've cut in a lot of other areas, trimming back and putting things off for a year and so on to see where the legislature may come in at as they convene this fall and winter to try and figure out how to deal with education. On seventy-five is the start of the new graph, cash flow. And you can see in that already on the bottom for twelve-thirteen of money that is being used to support the Orange Project. So you will see that go all through the year. The authorized balance that goes along with the revenues and expenditures that you've seen on the, on the previous pages. And this is dealing with twelve and projecting into thirteen, showing that our unspent balance at the bottom of the, the bottom of the column in ten was just under ten million. Then it went to thirteen-five at the end of eleven. And at the end of twelve, they're at twelve-three. And with the budget that's proposed right now, we are right at ten million dollars of where we expect our authorized balance to be. I know the question came up during Finance Committee of what is the board's goal? And by board policy, five, a minimum of five percent, which would be about six million dollars, up to ten percent. So we are a little bit at the top of that right now. But with the precarious numbers that we're facing and where the state is at, we're in very good shape of where we're sitting right now to our goals and the policies that the board has set up. But every decision has to be looked at very carefully. And that's how we are addressing all of this. But that's how we are set up right now. And it will be a continual review of how we have started the school year, if we need to do any tweaking or not. And then, of course, how the winter goes and how, if we have any surprises during the year. So all of those things come into all of the discussions. And we will address anything that comes up with that with Finance Committee discussions as well as then reporting to the board. So that's where we're at right now.
On page sixty-nine, it appears as though we spent two point two million more than the revenues. And yet, the unspent, the authorized balance only went down by one point three million.
The unspent balance is based on our total authorized budget, which was, went from one hundred and twenty-three million up to one hundred and thirty. Part of that, part of the authorization is not cash. It is authority we get from ELL, from money we have spent on asbestos projects, if we have increased enrollment. So there are some factors within that that are authorization that help that differential, and they're not actually cash.
So the twelve, two eighty-five is, that's the unspent authorized budget?
Yes.
And how much cash do we have?
We have, we don't have that final number yet. But I believe preliminarily, we're at about ten point five to eleven. So we're pretty, pretty close to fully funding for that.
On seventy-three, I see actual expenses. And it talks about salary, we went sixty point eight on ten, sixty-two point oh in eleven. Jumped to sixty-seven in twelve. And you're projecting only sixty-eight. So I'm, I'm, just have to ask, what happened between eleven and twelve? And apparently, you're not anticipating that big of a jump in thirteen for salaries?
That's something I'm not ready to answer yet. That's, that's what I start looking at now and going across and saying, giving you some answers to those questions.
Yeah, because I noticed that we went up one hundred and four percent of the budget on salary in twelve. So obviously, the bottom line came out okay. But it looks like, did we hire a bunch more people? Or were there some other circumstances or you really don't know?
From eleven to twelve, there was additional staff. There was quite a bit more special ed.
Okay.
Because we weren't spending that ed jobs money. There was federal programs that we were expanding. So there was a lot of different pieces to that.
And ed jobs generally was part of the, one of the federal financial stimulus projects.
Yes.
And that was a two-year?
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Discussions? If not, Michael, thank you. I know it is a busy time for you and your office, but thank you for getting this stuff together, for all you are doing. The next item that we have on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Just wanted to update the board. We are this week taking a look at a race to the top application. We fell out, we filled out a preliminary intent to apply for the, a grant. We're now studying the hundreds of pages of documentation of what we would need to do to qualify for such grant. And the thought was just what Mr. Coughlin was saying. What would be some ways we could continue with our staffing levels from the ed jobs, from the PLA schools, et cetera, et cetera? We began some preliminary discussions with WEA the other night just to see about their interest in working with us. And so this week, we're going to take a look. It appears to be a very huge undertaking to qualify for this grant. There's nine hundred districts that have thrown their hat into the ring. We don't know that that will be eventually, how many submit a grant. There are numerous categories that you have to be strong in each of the categories to apply. It may be better suited, as we've looked at it, and we're not at all saying that we shouldn't apply yet, but may be better suited for some districts that are in some of the states that are already race to the top states. There are some systems they have with not only teacher evaluation, but data warehousing and several other real strong parts of the grant that we don't have fully developed yet. So we're still taking a look at it to see if it would be a way to, to bring in some extra money, to keep some of our instructional programming. But on the other hand, we're not going to, and as I said to you before at some time, we're, we would have to have a grant consultant help us write it. It's a, this is a huge undertaking. It, it looked like to Jane probably, what'd you say, Jane, three to five times the work of the PLA grants, which were, which were hundreds of hours. But we're going to look at it anyway because whatever chance we get to bring in some extra dollars. So we're going to bring ourselves to a decision point on that this week or first to next week because that would only leave us three to four weeks to get the grant written. We'll let you know what, what it looks like. And then the other thing I would say is the air rifle shooting range at East High is up and running. They, the Colonel let the Superintendent fire the first pellet.
And did he hit the target?
Well, now, as you asked that question, the first, they tricked me a little bit at first. They let me fire seated from a table, and our arms were like this. And so I just, you know, if I do say so myself, I did a pretty good job at the first. And the cadets were kind of looking around like, woo. And then, and then the real, true competition started. And it was all setting up, holding the rifles still in a, in a, putting a BB down in the hole. If you look at the one forty-six at the back, back there, in the hole, it's trying to thread a BB through the six down there. And, and my arm was shaking, and I was, I had a bunch of caffeine. So the Colonel waxed me. I don't, I don't mind saying, they said, well, the Cadet came back and said, sir, you did kind of good in the prone positions. But it's going to be a great opportunity for our young people. And thank, thank you to the board for, for doing that. They're so proud of it. The kids are going to learn some responsibility of handling a firearm, even though it's an air-propelled CO2 firearm. And I just, they're going to then be competitive with it. It's going to be really good, so.
They might learn a bit of physics along, no way.
Amen, exactly.
How fast it travels, how far, how it drops.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And then that takes us to information from board members. Okay, this, we start with, I guess I was over here last time. I'll start with Lyle Schmidt. I looked at Pam.
Two items. First of all, are we approaching last year's enrollment numbers or aren't we ready to reveal that?
Well, the, as, as we reported to the, to the paper last week, the preliminary numbers look like we're on our way to an increase of ballpark of a hundred students. But we still have to cross a lot of bridges for the next three, four weeks. But we're, we're appearing to be heading, and that, that gain is primarily at the elementary.
Interesting.
Which is good.
Yeah. And then just, I think, I don't know if a workshop is in order. But the whole issue of student and staff health, I think now that the subject has come up, you know, and particularly once the BMI index numbers come back, I guess I'd be interested in what the trend line is and what's currently in our curriculum today. What's actually being tested in that realm on the Iowa test or the ACT or any of that? Is that even, is there anything relevant from a, from a testing standpoint? But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. It's the right thing to do from a science and lifelong learning standpoint. And then also, maybe at the same time, relative to staff health, maybe the latest insurance claims are where we are in that track because that, that gets affected particularly now that we're kind of on that, on that.
Savings program.
Savings program. So, so both, I think, student and staff health are issues that, I don't know, we really ought to discuss where it belongs in our, in our total priorities. And as well as the, well, integrated with that is the whole physical education piece of it. And, you know, and there's just all kinds of opportunities there, you know? East High golf, how many more calories do you burn if you carry your clubs versus if you ride? I mean, it's just, there's an endless number of relevant questions that I think are interesting and students ought to be challenged to figure out in their process of learning. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. All right, next, Mike Kinsey.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. And Andrea Sparks.
I want to thank our representative from the Courier out there for this very nice article that was in the Sunday paper about our Waterloo kids exploring future careers with these learning modules. And they offer a lot of hands-on technology. And the pictures were great, and the story was very nice. Thank you.
Let me just thank also the Waterloo Community Schools Foundation for helping line up those donations to get those modules, both from John Deere and from private donors. They, the community foundation, the Schools Foundation made a big difference.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Norris. Yeah, they, it's been a lot of people coming together to work on that. Bernice Richard.
Echoing what Andrea said, I did have a phone call congratulating the school district for great positive news and such a wonderful story on the front page. Andrew, on the front page, good news.
He doesn't decide.
Very positive.
And it seems as though the school year has gotten off to a pretty smooth start. And to me, that's always good news.
Thank you, Bernice. And Sue Flynn.
And also, I would, I know they're not here tonight, but like an update on our graduates. How many, if you know, Gary, how many we've got back from the program?
The reconnected graduate.
I was in the Twin Cities this weekend, and in the St. Paul Pioneer Press, they had what they're doing to try to encourage and bring students back. And we were on equal keel, if not more. And I was very, very impressed with what we're doing here in this district. And also, I just want to thank our teachers' union and our teachers for being at work. There's major districts that aren't G. I just, I, I, kudos to keeping our people working here in Iowa. And the West High Band went to Eastland in Minneapolis and performed this weekend. And I have to say, they were, the behavior of a hundred and forty kids was just superb. They spent the night, they went to the Mall of America on their way home for an hour and a half, not quite long enough. And, but they, I'm talking to Mr. Hobbly that they represented our city and our school very, very well. And so, kudos to the West High Band.
And I think that number is somewhere between fifteen and twenty, but we'll let you know for sure.
Thank you, Sue.
I hate being last. She took my band thing, so. I really have.
You could do heated orange.
Right, I could do that. Well, I could say that I'm really glad that we got those, that time for the staff out at Orange that was really nice and warm last week. But Tuesday was even, we're hoping that it doesn't hit ninety tomorrow. So, anyway. But I just have to echo what Sue said about the band. And just thank all of us up here that voted to let them go and send them on that trip because it's huge for them. They haven't done that for a couple of years, and it's a great experience for them. And also to see, there were bands from North Dakota, there were bands from Minnesota, there were bands from Iowa. Dowling was there. It was a great experience for the kids, so it was neat.
Oh, fantastic.
One other thing I thought I'd just mention, in case you haven't seen them yet, the, the last two and a half, three years, the, the East High Band has been growing incredibly from just a few people that would be able to march on the field, stand there and play. They're now doing some of the floating tougher, tougher patterns to march. And they're playing while they're marching. And Mrs. Smith just has, has done a great job.
She's dynamo, she's.
That, that band is growing fabulous.
Very good point. Every year, they seem to be improving, yeah. Yeah, that's great. Yes. And the only thing I had, two items, both East and West have academic and I know at East Athletic Hall of Fame inductions. And I'm, I think I'm going to miss the West High, I'll have to miss the West High induction. But just both of those high school programs, I think, are very good. Appreciate everybody that's involved in putting those on. Our next board meeting is in two weeks, next Monday, or I'm sorry, Monday, September twenty-fourth at six PM here in the boardroom. And if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Their average salary, seventy-two thousand, and their graduation rates, fifty-five percent.
Who's averaging that?
Chicago. And they're on strike.
Yeah.
This is not the time for teachers in this country. This is so not the time.
I think so.